All right, is that better? Can you hear me now? Okay. Well, I have the summary. Carol, you hit something. There we go. Okay, so I have just, actually, just two quick slides. That gives you the summary of the options that you guys have all seen. Between options, the difference between the proposed and option one through six. You'll see, you can see the difference in, obviously, the beginning fund balance from proposed through all six options is going to be due to the fact that projections for sales tax have changed. That was because we had really good month for last month. Well, actually, we should be getting sales tax figures for the last month of the year, sometime this week, hopefully. So, we're hoping to get, and that's still the same trend that we've been following. So, that should be a good indication, hopefully. Then, so you'll see the change there in the beginning fund balance of all the options. And then, due to all the different kind of changes between the tax rates, if we change any of the, any tax rates, the new projection for sales tax, any of that changes will show all the difference in the revenue. So, you can kind of look through that if you need to. And then, the expenses, over to the very far right would be your changes. So, if we added expenses, we took away expenses, that's going to affect each one of your expense line items that you'll see there under expenses. And then, obviously, all those factors factor into your ending fund balance that we came up with. Obviously, your target fund balance is going to change as your expenses fluctuate, then your target is also going to change, and then also, over and under your target will change. So, you guys have seen all this. I sent you two different presentations, which were, first presentation was one through four, and then the last was the five and six, which were suggestions from the previous work session that we had. So, that just kind of gives you a rundown of those different options there. Any questions, comments, feedback on those? And then, and then, this is just a... I can't hear you.
Sorry. Okay, just take option five, for example. The expenses for option five and the proposed are the same, essentially, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, but the beginning, so the fund balance for the proposed is 19%, and for option five is 20%, is that the difference? Because there's about $200,000 in difference in the...
Revenue?
In the fund balance, yes. Yeah.
Between the proposed?
Between the proposed and option five, just as an example.
Yes, that's the projection, the sales tax projection. So, the beginning fund balance, yes, that's the difference there.
But it's a twen-, it's, it's that 1% of the fund balance? Is one of them 19 and one of them's 20, is what I'm trying to ask?
Between the proposed and option five.
There's one of them is 19 and one's 20?
No, 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 no. The only difference between proposed and option five is the projections of sales tax. We fixed that in the 1920 projections. So, if you'll see, the beginning fund balances there are 6.2 million, and then all the remainder of them, including option five, is 6.4. And then, if you'll look, the targets are the same.
Okay, the targets are the same, okay.
Our targets are the same, so our percentage of our target is the same.
Okay, I got you, I'm sorry.
So, that's the only thing that changed. The only difference between option one and the proposed is the difference in the tax rate. No expenses were added, taken away, or anything, just the projections changed and the tax rate changed.
Right.
That's the only two differences.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And then, the other summary we kind of prepared for you was the proposed and option one with the different tax rates. What kind of the difference if you owned a $100,000 home, and this is just super simple math, not anything else? And so, just gave you your cost per day, and you slide over, you have your cost per month, then you have your cost per year. And then, we did the savings per year from the proposed. So, all the different savings are just from the different tax rates. So, say, for instance, option one would save you $10.95 a year, just by going down that tax rate, as a $100,000 homeowner. Option four is $25.55, option five is $18.25, and then, obviously, option six is $3.65. We also showed there, to the very far right, the last two columns is going to be your savings per year with the additional $10,000 that you guys approved previously. So, if you're $100,000 homes, now you're being taxed on 90, so then, there's your cost per year, and then, that's what you would save per year, as opposed to just having, being taxed on $100,000, as opposed to $90,000. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of the savings if you're over 65 on that homesteadic, that additional $10,000 that you guys approved, that they should be able to see that. So, other than that, I don't have anything other prepared. I'll take questions, comments. I will note that we'll go through the spreadsheet during the regular budget process. Another big change that we were going through and went through projections on our construction permits, in the month of August, we, we collected 52% of our actual budget. So, in one month, we collected 52% of our budget on top of what we already had. So, we projected that up another $160,000, because construction has been going so well. Talked with Steve about it this morning, and he can answer any questions if he needs to. We think a lot of, they, there was some pause there for a while during COVID, in March, April, May, and then, kind of, once everything kind of went forward as usual, then everybody started just building, and it hit us all in that one month. So, we've projected that up a little bit more as well. So, when you get to the spreadsheet, it might look a little bit more favorable, and that's prob-, that's another big reason why. So, that's the really only other big thing that we found in projections, that was the big one, besides the sales tax, those were the two biggest changes, since you've seen it since the proposed.
Anybody have any questions for? All right, thank you, Summer. All right, the next item is an update on the amendment to the Code of Ordinances for Parks and Recreation. Brett?
Mayor, Council, good evening.
I hope this is riveting.
It's, it's something. I don't know if riveting is the right word, but it's something.
After reading the number of pages you had for a cemetery, let me tell you, you've got a big task to make it riveting.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I apologize for that. No, but we have, our staff has spent the better part of 10 months now going through our, all our ordinances for the Parks and Recreation Department, golf, cemetery, and so, some of the things that we noticed is that it's very difficult for our staff, especially young staff, to read through there and find what we allow, what we don't allow. So, restructuring was our first and foremost goal. And then, and then, also, to update, a lot of these ordinances haven't been updated since 1990. There's been a few that had been updated a little bit earlier, but for the most part, they're all about 30 years old. So, so, here we go. You guys are real lucky that y'all get to see this. There we go. Roll it back to... All right, so, under the parks and open space, one of the things we, we kind of, and this is just a highlight of the ordinances, obviously, I couldn't fit all the pages into a spreadsheet, or into a presentation. But establishment of other rules and regulations. So, just to make the citizens aware that we do have other rules outside the ordinances, especially for our programs, it was create sections in there, so that it's easier for patrons and staff to find what is permitted and prohibited. And so, we created prohibited activities, activities allowed with permit, just to make it easier for folks to know what, what we allow, or tell them what they need to do. Tobacco use, for the most part, stayed the same, concrete areas. We did add electronic vaping devices to it, to be a little bit more current. Golfing in the parks has been something we, we have issues with from time to time, as far as going out there on soccer fields, hitting golf balls, or on the baseball fields. And so, we did put something in there that, you know, basically mandates that they have to be on something that's either by signage or an actual golf course that allows them to know that, that there's golfing allowed out there. Fees, we updated all our fees to resident and non-resident, just to, just to try to make sure that our residents know that they get some benefit for being taxpayers. Special events, we actually created a definition for special events that'll help us, I think, grow those programs a little bit, and also helps us make sure that we're, we know what we're scheduling when we schedule these things. The special event permit is a new form we created that'll allow anybody from the public who's hosting a special event to fill this out, and it kind of gives us an idea of how many people they're expecting, what type of event, and then, we get that around to all the other departments for their approval. Continuing on the parks and open spaces, outpark facility, however, we did add a prohibition that wouldn't apply to the following park facilities. City-owned municipal golf courses, which is current, that's, that's already a current ordinance. And then, we added a special event, as defined in this section, hosted at Grand Park or the Greenville Sports Park, has received permission in the form of a special event permit that's been approved by appropriate departments and city manager, a city concession contract approved by appropriate departments or city manager, and a facility use agreement requesting an alcohol permit approved by the city manager. And any authorized city-sponsored special event in which a permit was approved by appropriate departments and city manager. And really, the intent of this is for some of our special events to, to be able to grow that, you know, you guys, for example, Bottle Rocket Bash is $60,000 event. And so, we have to go out and get money. And so, one of the things, we already have a lot of people out there with alcohol as it is, whether they're bringing it, or, or, you know, in their trucks, or whatever the case is. So, for us, it was, you know, the Parks Board looked at it from an idea of growing, generating through revenue sales at some of our concerts that we have, that's more adult-oriented, and then, really, kind of restricting, you know, where, where these, where these permits are allowed. And then, having it go between all the departments, police, fire, community development, to make sure that they all have approval before we proceed with that.
So, if we have an event like the fireworks, when we actually can have fireworks, and people want to bring their coolers in and stuff like that, do they have to have a permit, or is that a special event that we say it's okay to do that?
Well, on this type of deal, what, what you would do is, you'd be a permit to sell. So, we would have to do kind of similar to the downtown events where...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not talking to sell. But if somebody brings their cooler in, and they want to sit with their family, and they've got some beer in there, is that legal?
Um, no, sir. We, we would ask them to, no coolers allowed. So, unless, unless y'all want it, I mean, it's kind of defeats the purpose of generating revenue, if we're allowing them to bring it in. So, if that's something y'all wanted to do, we could adjust it to that. Okay?
We can decide at the time.
Okay. Parks and open spaces, continued, commercial or business activities. This is something we have some issues with, especially with the exercise classes that come out there, which is great that they're using the parks, however, they kind of monopolize the pavilions, the places where grandparents and parents may be going to watch their kids on the playground, they have nowhere to sit, and, and then, on top of that, these commercial entities are charging people to be in that class. So, basically, what we stated in there is they have, it's required to get a permit, which means they have to reserve the facility that they're using. And so, those fees would, would, are in the fee schedule. And then, golf, our golf ordinances, for the most part, they stayed the same. We did restructure them a little bit to, for the same thing, to make it a little easier to read, and for staff to be able to find, find the restrictions and things in there. And then, we did establish resident and non-resident fees, and we did eliminate a $900 senior membership rate, which, for that one, that was our weekdays-only inclusive membership. And most people, I think we only had two people using that, the majority of the seniors utilize the $1,100, because it's seven days a week. So, this one is hardly ever used, so we just took it out, just to make it easier on staff.
Can, can you explain the rationale for the discount for City and Juice employees, plus a waiver of their initiation fees on the memberships on golf?
Can we explain it?
Yeah, what's the rationale for that?
Well, I mean, I think before, prior to me being here, I think the Juice and City employees were getting a very discounted rate, and so, we had a lot of members from the, from the employees on it. So, we went in and adjusted it, what, 2014, 16, maybe? When we created those memberships, we adjusted it and narrowed down that membership for the employees. You know, I think, I think in the past, it was always something that had been done for City and Juice employees, just to give them, you know, quality of life, kind of a perk for working, working here, type of deal. So, we did narrow that, that discount quite a bit, I think, to, what, 15% or 10%, and then waived initiation fees. So, I think that was, I think that was the rationale. I think before that, it was almost 30%.
Thank you.
How many people do you have that have annual membership?
Nine D3. Cemeteries, so, the cemeteries, we've been working, talking with the subcommittees about expanding East Mount. And so, in preparation of that expansion, there were some things we needed to address in these ordinances to make it a little bit easier. So, one of the things we did was put in the cemetery services permit application, because currently, we, we really don't have a good grasp of who's in there doing work and who's not. So, we created a permit, basically, any work that's done in the cemetery, they have to apply, fill out, and then, we approve, and then, they go in there and do work. Same thing with contractors being required to be insured, and adding city as additionally insured. A lot of times, the, we get people to call in, headstones been knocked over by tractors, we call the funeral homes, yeah, we used eight different guys to, to dig the holes, so we're not real sure who it was, or if they're insured. So, I think for this, this is just to protect the city a little bit. And then, monument restrictions on new sections, so, any new sections we create, or new cemeteries we build in the future, what we wanted to do is create monument restrictions where our soil is so bad, we have a lot of monuments leaning, that what ends up happening is we can't locate family and who's ultimately responsible for it, and we find, we have a lot of issues like that. So, what a lot of cemeteries have gone to is the flush mound only, which are ground level, so it makes it easier to maintain, makes it easier on the monuments themselves as far as falling over, they don't have the weight of the granite pulling them down. And then, we went in a step further and defined the base construction for those, to make sure that we're adequately building those, those foundations correctly. Define restrictions on planting and decorations, that's, that kind of goes in the same line. A lot of those flat, flat-mounted, flush-mounted monuments already have bases built into them for flowers and things like that, but planting around, it becomes kind of a, a maintenance nightmare for, for staff who's, you know, having to pull flowers, move them, weed eat, those type of things. And then, define restrictions on curbing hedges and fences, you know, and before you could pour a curb around your, your plots, however, we've run into some issues where it's become a weapon with the mowers, because they're running, they're shooting concrete across the cemetery, little rocks where it's broken up and chipped up, and then, we can't contact anybody to replace or fix it. We've run into issues there, so we, we've taken those out of the new sections as well. And then, fees, created resident and non-resident, and then, added fees for digging and memorial services, which we haven't had in the, in the past.
Yeah, looking through some of your fee structures, I noticed some of them have basically tripled, and understandably, we haven't updated since 1990. But have we checked how our fees fit in with, like, our comparison cities, or did we just...
Yes, sir, no, I mean, our, our fees are pretty relevant. The $100 fees, those are pretty good. The, the non-resident fee would be a little high, but I think when, when we went to the subcommittee with that, the, you know, the thought process was a residence $1,500 for a spot, and then, non-residents are $3,000. So, you know, just to put them in line with, with the cemetery out there on 1570, and then, we're only limited, we're limited on spaces. So, I think with this new section, I think totals 4,610 plots, I think off the top of my head, I think it's 17 total acres, we can actually use a little over eight, or a little nine point something, so, because the rest of it's in the floodplain, so, we can't utilize that for burial.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, parkland dedication and park development. So, this is something that, that's been around for a long time, and, you know, and every year, cities are getting into, you know, budget constraints with, especially with quality of life issues, with the rising cost of, of infrastructure. So, this is something that we've kind of looked at, that other cities are doing, and that we actually have in place currently, but I think this is an enhancement that we feel like will benefit the city for many years to come. So, parkland dedication, the perspective is that it enables cities to protect the interest of current residents and manage growth. It's defined as a local government requirement imposed on subdivision developers or builders, mandating that they dedicate land or park and/or pay a fee to be used by the local government entity to acquire and develop park facilities. Means, they are a means of providing park facilities in newly developed areas of a jurisdiction without burdening existing city residents. And then, user fees, a lot of times, these are, are conceptualized as a type of user fee, because the intent is that the landowner developer, new homeowners who are responsible for creating the demand, should pay the fees for the new parks. So, we went in and looked at our comparison competitive cities. This is sometimes very difficult, because they're not easy to find, they're hidden in a lot of different codes, you know, for example, ours are in subdivisions. And so, it was difficult for us to find. So, out of our comparison cities, Dennison, they're kind of the, the only one that we could find information on that does it. I'm fairly positive Cleburne has one, I just couldn't find it anywhere. But what Dennison does is a $500 per unit or land in lieu of. So, theirs is kind of reverse of what we're proposing to do. They're wanting the cash upfront and the land, but I think they have almost 450 acres of parkland. So, I think, I think that they've had a lot of donated land here in the last couple of years, so, land's not, not a, not an issue for them at this point. Competitive cities, there's a lot of different ways to go about this. You know, Wiley's cash only, five acres for, per hundred units that they demand, so they're asking the developers to provide one acre for every 25 homes, which is steep. Matter of fact, I think that puts them in the top five in the state. Rockwall was cash only, and then, they had calculated park divisions, districts where they went in and, and basically had a calculated fee that came down, and their formula was very complicated, and I'm in parks, so I'm not really a math guy, but it was pretty complicated for me. Rowlett, every home is responsible for a parkland dedication, and theirs was pretty simplistic, however, they didn't really have any justification or any kind of parameters or methodology to how they, how they determine the land dedication. It's just a flat fee, which can become an issue in courts. Heath, you can see theirs, theirs was probably 3,500, all totaled up, and that's a, they had a park fee on top of their fee in lieu of. And then, Plano, they're actually in the process of redoing theirs, because theirs isn't enough. So, they just started a couple of weeks ago with redoing theirs.
Now, these cities, is this just parkland, or is this parkland and green space?
Sir, it's parkland, green space, any, any, you know, floodplain, any kind of drainage basin that, what could be considered a park?
Detention, retention, it's, it's all undeveloped?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so, variables and calculations. So, we set up a lot of, a lot of different variables, fee in lieu of land, we use parkland level of service, which we took our population, divided it by the park acres, to get 145 people per acre. Our park acreage is currently technically 200 acres, however, we only have 83 developed. So, we use 200 for the sake of, for the intent that we want to develop the other 118 or 119 acres. City population, we estimated about 29,000. Park development fees, we use facilities level of service, which you take your population, divide by the total number of parks. So, about one park serves 3,222 residents in Greenville. Number of parks, we have nine in total. Of course, city population, same thing, estimated at 29,000. Neighborhood park development cost, we just forecasted a park recently that was in a ballpark of about 320,000, and those neighborhood parks are, are, are meant to serve people in the area. So, they're not going to be, they're not going to be parks that have a lot of the amenities like dog parks, or restrooms, or parking lots, those real expense-driven parks. These are meant to be fairly basic. So, our, our master plan talks about a half basketball court, a trail around the outside of playground, benches, and trash receptacle. So, that's what 320,000 is, and trees.
Is, is any part of the mark, uh, park master plan include private, leon parks that are maintained by the HOAs?
Yes, sir, and we'll address some of that here in a little bit, but yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that is something that we have in here.
On the very first line, parkland level of service, is that our current level of service, or an ideal level of service, or what is it?
That's a current.
Okay.
It's as we sit right now.
And, and so, is that, is that enough? Is, how's that compared to other people?
Well, I mean, we, we should be, we're at 200 acres, we should be at about 363.
Okay.
So, our, really, that number should be about 82, 83, should be about 82 to 83 people per acre. So, that, that would be an ideal, and, and in my budget presentations, I don't know if y'all remember, we put those NRPA statistics on those slides, and, and that's, that's where we, that's where a lot of this information comes from, are those statistics that we get off there. But yeah, if you had, you know, you want to be around 80, 82 people per acre, that's, that's about the right acre. So, we're, we're about 160 acres shy of where we need to be. But in a lot of these numbers, this, this formula, it's scary to look at in the beginning, but then, keep in mind, is that as we, as those numbers change, we lower the people per acre, we expand the number of parks, the doll, the fee amount goes down. It lowers as our park space grows, which is the intent of it. Community park cost is about two and a half million, those are your bigger parks, those are the ones that you have to implement restrooms, parking, they're typically 15 to 30 acres in size, you know, that you, you can have at least a, a full half mile, if not a three-quarter mile track around, with a lot of amenities.
That'd be similar to Grand Park?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Grand, Grand Park and the sports park, and really, the sports park counts as a regional park, however, we counted it as what's currently developed as a community park, for, for matters of this, for this deal.
What part of, what part of Graham was funded with the state grant, do you remember?
What part?
Yeah, there was some of the, all of it was done with the state grant?
Yes, yes, all, all of that, that was, I believe, a half million dollar match grant that included dredging the pond and putting fountains and redoing a lot of the playscapes in there, so I think that was 2012, 2011, and the splash pad that's there. All right, people per household, we used 2010 census to get 2.6. And then, parkland dedication, this is something that will, in, in every year, we'll go in, as part of the budget process, we'll go in and reevaluate these calculation factors and the variables, and update annually. So, but as it sits, our parkland dedication dwellings level of service per acre is 54 for single family, 58 dwellings for multifamily. So, moving forward, you know, what we're going to do is it'll be one acre, you have, you know, parkland dedication will be one acre for 54 dwellings of, of single family, 58 dwellings. fifty-eight dwellings for, for multifamily. All right, getting into the current parkland dedication ordinance. It was adopted in two thousand six. The requirements for parkland dedication in this ordinance currently apply only after developments which include five hundred or more dwelling, dwellings are built. They are based on dwelling units and must provide one acre for every hundred and thirty-three dwellings. And then less than five acres was declared impractical for a neighborhood park. So, this is kind of important because when you're looking at, if you determine that less than five acres are impractical, then essentially, we needed six hundred and sixty-five dwellings built before we got enough acreage to provide a park. And so what we did in this ordinance is kind of leave it where we've got the right either way. If we, because most, all of our neighborhood parks, I think Warren's the closest, at four point one acres. The majority of our neighborhood parks are not four acres or five acres. So, you know, we wanted to leave it open. However, five acres would be ideal. But we could make an exception through there if the right circumstances, the right type of property was there, and depending on the number of houses being built and that it was serving. Cash in lieu of was two hundred and fifty dollars for single family and a hundred and sixty dollars for multifamily. And then the park development fee was two hundred and fifty and must be applied in the area of development, which we did something very similar to that. The only thing with going in is I couldn't find any methodology on how these numbers were calculated, that where we could try to follow that. We couldn't find anything. It looked more like they were just, you know, whole numbers that we just put out there. And then F has not produced any capital or acreage to the city in the fourteen years that it's been in place. And so for us, you know, then, then at that point, we start looking, how, how can we improve this thing? So our proposed plan is going to be to divide and create four park districts. And we're using our, our transportation, using thirty into sixty-nine, and then using Wesley all the way down to thirty-four as a dividing line. And, and that way, you have four distinct districts. And the idea here is that if you build a house in District One, then, then the money has to be spent in District One. And we've kind of highlighted, you can kind of see our, our current neighborhood parks as there's, got the little circles around them right there. And then you see Oak Creek at the bottom of the page. It's way away from everything. But ideally, when you look at this, what you'd like to see is you wouldn't like to see any streets. You would like to see all the streets in some vicinity of a park. So there are some areas where we need to, we're lacking coverage and, and we need to put in a park there. But this, this is going to be the starting point for us, is dividing this into four districts. Okay, so, the proposed ordinance will include, but not be limited to, a formula-based methodology to be used to apply fees, which the formula, there, there's literally like a hundred thousand of them. And we couldn't afford ninety-nine thousand of them. So I think we got about the only one that, that I felt like put us in a, in a position where we don't deter development, but we can build on moving forward. The requirement for the parkland dedication and park development fees would apply to all future residential development, which some cities, kind of how we had it set up before, where it only started at five hundred. What, what you see in other cities is that they never have a development of five hundred, but that all developments are four hundred and ninety-nine. So, because at four ninety-nine, you don't have to provide any parkland. Only, it only started after five hundred. So we, we said it applies to all residential development, as it sits. And, and some cities did, didn't restrict it to residential. Some, some cities had, had parkland development even on industrial development, which, which I think, you know, in everything I read, you know, it was awfully, there was a lot of gray area there for, for industrial development. But... So getting into the land dedication, it's best, based on level of service divided by your dwelling units. Cash in lieu is your appraised value, divided by, for this year, it'll be single family fifty-four dwellings, multifamily fifty-eight. And like I said, next year, we'll reevaluate that, what those dwellings come out to. We'll do it annually.
If we move towards a mixed-use type of category, you know, retail below, is that considered multifamily, or is that, are we going to create some parkland dedication for that? We may have to do a new category for that.
We would have to put something in at that point. Good question, though. That's one nobody's asked. Park development, we base that on a combination. So the park development fee that you see will be based on a combination of neighborhood park development plus the community development fee. We'll add those two together to make up one park development fee. We did put in a right to refund, where we have to expend the money in ten years. And then there's some caveats to that. Obviously, the developer, if he, if he developed more than fifty percent of, of his project, he would be ineligible for refund. They have to submit in writing within a year. And then, of course, if we spent the money already, if we've already expended it, then he wouldn't be eligible for refund. And then option to construct and option to construct credit. So, a lot of these cities have gone to the model that Mr. Atkins was kind of referring to, where, you know, the developers, the cities have kind of put this on the developer to build projects, convey it to an HOA, they maintain it, they, they're responsible for it. And so what we've put in there is an option to construct credit to try to encourage that, where we'll give a credit to, towards their fees if they're building the park. We'll credit them that money if they're building a park for usage. The only thing is, I think the caveats were that it has to be available to the public and accessible to the public. So, some of the issues you run into are the subdivisions that are gated, where they're building parks inside, so that wouldn't account towards the construction credit, because it's not available to the public and accessible to the public.
How much, how much is the credit?
It's a dollar amount that Mr. Ray can talk about, because that was pretty complicated.
Okay.
It's a, it started off as a dollar-for-dollar based on what they spent. But then that leaves us relying on them to tell us the truth. And sometimes developers in the past, some recently, have come up with costs that, where they did the work themselves, and it was four times the amount that it normally reasonably would have been. And so I redrafted that section, basically say it's either, it's the, the lower of, either the dollar value that they spent or the value of the improvement that they put forward based on the director's review of their receipts plus commercially reasonable standards for that type of, of improvement.
Okay, but it's dollar-for-dollar?
It, well, it's dollar-for-dollar, or if they have, you know, if they say they spent seven hundred thousand, but it would have cost normally thirty thousand to put that in, then it's thirty thousand.
Right, right, I got you. But, but if they, if, if we actually do believe that they spent, but, but let's say their, their development, they, they need to spend two hundred and fifty thousand for their thing. If they, if they've spent, or we believe that they spent two hundred and fifty thousand, then they're not going to have to pay anything else?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And that will get approved ahead of time?
Sir.
I would assume there would be, that's approved prior to?
The way that it's written, it's not. It's a retroactive review.
You don't want to get them, you don't want to surprise them at the end after they have spent, I mean, there should be some pre-approval process that says, yes, if you build that, you're good.
That pre-approval process is not in here now, but it can be added. I mean, basically, it's set up so that it can be reviewable after the fact. Hopefully, we'll just send the receipts, everything looks good, and then we can approve it.
I would just think, as a developer, you want to know upfront, okay, if I, if I spend this money, I'm good. And, and so I, I really think, if we're wanting to encourage people to follow this model, which I think in the long term is better for us, because they're mowing it, they're maintaining it and all of that, we need to make it easy for them to do that. And, and, and not a surprise at the end, well, you just build it and we'll tell you whether it's good enough.
Sure. Yeah, and that, we did talk about that. It's harder when you think about how to put that in place, because if you get pre-approval on certain things, and then instead of putting in a seventy thousand dollar zip line, they, and we just have zip line, and they put a thirty thousand dollar zip line in, then we're kind of left with no review.
But that's true of any construction project. I mean, you just get the plans upfront, they show you the material list, they, you know, and then at the end, they have to have met those specs. And I think that's, that's preferable to the, we'll let you know at the end model.
Sure. Yeah, we can definitely amend that and put that, I mean, that would take probably two or three sentences in one of these sections to put that in. But we can talk about that and, and put it in tonight, or...
Or you could even, something as simple as put it's part of the pre-development process before filing the preliminary plat, you could at least get a layout.
Sure.
And that way, we wouldn't have to go doing a lot of amending on fly.
Clearly, there's other cities that have done that kind of thing, though, right?
Yes, yeah, yes. And typically, what they do is they have a sheet that has all the, you know, eight-foot walking trail, you know, and then it has a dollar amount out next to it. So they've kind of calculated what goes into that three hundred and twenty thousand, and they give it to the developer. And the developer says, yes, I'm going to do that. And then, you know, the city's go, goes through, through the pre, the pre-approval process. You know, we'll meet with them and say, yes, you know, you can't use a Home Depot playground. You're going to have to get something that's ADA compliant and all that. So, you know, that we have some say in, in what, how that's done, yes, sir. So, and we can do the same thing. We just have to put together kind of like what, I mean, we already have it in our master plan. It's already listed.
Right.
What, what goes in a neighborhood park.
Predictability is key for, 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 yeah, for those developers. They need to know what it's going to cost, so...
Sure. Okay, ownership and conveyance. So to Al's point, you know, the lot of, that's kind of the big deal, is the HOAs, land trust. You know, it's kind of mixed reviews. Some cities have a lot of luck with HOAs, but they, they've always, they've had a lot of experience with HOAs. So they've, they've got a, you know, twenty, fifteen, twenty years of strong HOAs established. You know, then there's some cities where they wish that, that, that they'd never happened because they didn't have the right construction, option to construct, information in, and then the HOA falls apart. And then, of course, it goes right back to the city, and the city's got to come in and tear out all the infrastructure and rebuild it. And so we tried to make sure that we, we protected ourselves with that and that they have to, you know, if, if a developer is going to take the option to construct, he's got to build it to our specs. He's got to convey it to somebody, whether that's the HOA, the land trust, or, or the city. Somebody like that. So, there's pros and cons of both. I think ultimately, my dream, and if you ask my parks maintenance guys, their dream would be HOAs are, are maintaining these parks. So, but, you know, in a perfect world, it doesn't always happen like that. And it may take some time to get to that point.
I think that's a taxpayer's dream, too.
Yes, sir. So park development fees collected. So basically, the process for this is going to be that the first fiscal year will be collection. And so if approved tonight, it would go into effect October one. And then this first year would be all collection. And then the second fiscal year, we know what that number is. We take that number, we begin the planning and design. And then the third fiscal year, we will actually start allocation and development and, and go in and use that at that point. And then, we added J, city match. Cities have had a lot of success because as the subcommittee brought up, you know, one of the downsides to this type of ordinance is that oftentimes, cities is kind of out of sight, out of mind. When the developer's building it, the cities kind of quit investing in the parks. Well, with the way the laws are written, we have to use that money in the area of development. So, you know, what happens to the other parks on the other side of town? And so the, the city match was a way that we would guarantee up to a penny on the tax rate that we can put money in the other parks across town, because we can do with that money whatever you guys want to, whichever park you want. The park of greater need, basically. Any questions on that? Okay, so the dedication, here's the good old methodology of this, this deal. So, using the current level of service of one acre for every hundred and forty-five residents, population divided by two hundred acres of parkland. And what we did on people per household, our average is two point six. So for single family, we calculated it two point seven. And then multifamily did two point five. And, and these, like again, again, these typically serve a quarter or half-mile radius. These, these aren't meant big, big parks by any means. So the land dedication, step one, is going to be one acre provided for. And then you take your, your level of service divided by the people per household, and you get your dwellings level of service. So that's fifty-four and fifty-eight. The fee in lieu of is then calculated by the appraised value, which that's, that's kind of a thing with cities. Every city does it differently. Some use it market value. Some use a combination of the two. But for us, we felt like appraised value was a little safer, a little bit more conservative number. And you take that, divide it by the dwellings, and you get a fee in lieu of per dwelling. So for, as an example, if lot one appraises for thirty-two thousand, you divide that by the single-family dwellings, and then you come up with five ninety-two sixty per dwelling. If it's multifamily, then it's five fifty-one seventy-two per dwelling. And then, you know, if you go on to, you know, an area like, I'll, I'll use District One, north side of town, where the lots appraised anywhere from seven to twelve thousand over there, I use ten thousand as an example. So, if you're building a house over there, you would pay one eighty-five nineteen per dwelling. So this is built so that it's based on the people per household and the appraisal value, so that it slides appropriately. Yes, sir. I'll speak up. If you have like a multifamily out near the interstate, well, no, because that's per acre. So then we figure, depending on the zoning, how many dwellings per acre. Right. And so for, for example, we did one on the south part of town with Brent South this morning, just as an example. So I made sure I understood how this would work. You know, if he, if he bought, if somebody bought a hundred acres and paid a million dollars for it, then you divide that by the number of dwellings per acre. You know, the price is actually low. The appraisal value's lower than the market value, which is the way it should be set up, because they're going to sell them for much more per lot or, or per acre. So, yeah, but I definitely see where you would get that. Yeah, we would break it down to dwellings per acre, depending, depending on the number, the way it was zoned. Is that right, Steve? And so, you know, this thing, like I said, it'll slide depending on the evaluate, the appraisal value. And that's something that we'll have to do on a case-by-case basis. Instead of us coming in, I think initially, we started off with the market value of thirty-two thousand per acre. And, and we thought we could just leave it there, and that would, we would just do an analysis each year and get a new market value. However, we found out that there could be some issues with that, legality issues concerning if, if on one, the other end of town had a different value, how you're going to charge somebody based on the market value in one side of town on the opposite side of town. All right, so the park development fee, step three. We took three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is our cost to build a neighborhood park. We divide that number by the total number of neighborhood parks. And we came up with seven thousand two hundred and fifty people. And then we broke, divided that by four and got forty-four fourteen per person. And so then you take that, multiply it by your people per household, and you came up with a neighborhood park fee of one nineteen eighteen per dwelling. And so as, as the park development fee is, is submitted in whole, it would be split out per these numbers. So it automatically builds in for us, how much of it's going to community park, how much of it's going to neighborhood park. And then community park fee, same thing, twenty-nine thousand. Take your population, divide it by the number of parks. And we, we counted Graham Park and the sports park as, as our community parks to get fourteen thousand five hundred. Like I said, if you only used one park, then one park serving twenty-nine thousand, and that was, that number was astronomical. And so, so then you take the two and a half million, get that fee to about a hundred and seventy-two forty-one per person. And then that fee comes out to be four sixty-five fifty-one for single family. Sir?
All of these fees that we're talking about is, it's not existing homes or anything. It's a fee when a developer is building a, a unit or building an area.
Yes, sir.
So it's not like all the people that live out there are suddenly going to get a bill for a hundred and nineteen dollars.
Not unless you let me.
No, we're going to let you try and sell that.
No, you're, you're correct. I mean, and that's some of the questions that came up, is if I buy a house, do I have to pay a fee? No, this is on, on houses being built. And the idea of this whole ordinance is the impact it puts on the parks with the development. And, and you have to follow that nexus principle very closely, or, or you could... with the development. And, and you have to follow that nexus principle very closely, um, or, or you could, we could get into some issues, so.
If we pass this and it effective the 1st of October, anybody that's already got their plat and everything approved,
grandfathered.
His grandfather, not susceptible to this.
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, going into, so when you, when you look at the total fees?
Can I ask a follow-up question there? So, if somebody, uh, has a, uh, they're not plating, but they're just building a house on a lot, a project or store lot or something, um, it's based on the, when they pull the permit, get a building permit? So if a person has a subdivision that's already platted, um, would they not, I mean, they wouldn't have to do the land dedication or fee in lieu, but would they have to pay the, this? So they don't pay anything if they're already-
That's the first question.
Right, okay, just wanted to make sure. Yeah, it, it'd probably be illegal to change it at this point, but, yeah. So, so even if somebody has a, a platted something, um, and they are not gonna build for three, four, five, six years, they're still not gonna have to pay the, any of these fees?
The only thing that would come into play is if that timed out and they had to re-
If they had to start over? Gotcha. Okay.
If they have to resubmit, then it, it would be applied at that point.
But somebody could own a lot under Project Restore right now, or, or for any other reason, somewhere else that's not in a platted subdivision, and if they, if they don't pull that permit before the ordinance goes into effect, they're gonna owe this fee? Okay.
Um, and so getting into the total parkland, park fees, um, you know, so basically there's, there's options. You know, you want to be very careful, and we, we were very careful in here to make sure that we don't leave it up to the sole, sole discretion of the developer to decide whether he wants to pay fee in lieu of or wants to provide acreage. Um, we, we found some, many cases where cities got into a bind with that. And so we made sure that ultimately we hold, you know, like on the south end of town, land would be more valuable to us, um, because we don't have any park space south of, south of town, where on the north side of town, the fee in lieu of would be more beneficial, because we have some parks already in there, depending on where the location of the development's going. Um, and so, you know, when we look at this, the fee in lieu of, um, we based it off, so what we did was took 32,000 and then the 10,000 and, and did a, an appraised value of 21,000. And then, and then came up with these fees. So it would be 973 total for single family, and then multifamily would be 90345. But like I said, these fees are going to, they hinge solely on the appraised value. Uh, the park development fee is set, but that fee in lieu of is going to be based on the, on the appraised values. Um, and so if we had had, I'm sorry, oh, okay, I thought I heard somebody say something. Uh, parkland, so if we'd have had this in place last year, uh, we took 242 units at the 97358, we would have generated about 235,606 dollars, and the city's match portion would have been 14149498. And, and the city's match portion is only on the park's development fees, not on the fee in lieu of, it's just on park development fees. Um, and then 1920 to this point, we would have generated about 169,400 and some change, and then the match would be about 101,000. So I think we're still quite a ways away from a max of, cap of one penny uh, on the tax rate for the city's match. Sir?
When you look at these and, and somebody's gonna build a starter home that's gonna run, say, 150,000, their fee or their, uh, in lieu of, their land in lieu of would be the same as, as somebody that's building a 400,000 dollar home.
Depends on the appraised value. So it's on a case-by-case basis, so.
So it's on the appraised value of the homes being built.
Of the land.
Of the land.
Of the land.
Correct, yeah. And that's where, you know, yeah, you, you miss out on some stuff, you know, by having to do it early and just get on the appraised value of the land. However, I think it's the safest way for us to go. As you get into the market value of some of this property and, and developers, you know, I don't, I don't feel like they, I feel like it could, could push them away, because you're talking 3,500 dollars per unit or greater. That's just on fee in lieu of. So, but yes, it all depends on, on what that land, uh, appre, uh, praises, is appraised at.
And isn't the concept that it, that there should be a certain amount of park per person? So it doesn't matter if that person is living in an apartment or a duplex or a mansion, that this, it goes to a city area of park space?
Correct. It, it's all based on that level of service, the 145 people to one acre, you know, the number of, of people or a number of parks, uh, per acre. So, you know, it, it's all relative to that. And so, like I said, once, once your park space grows, the number of parks grows, then that fee shrinks, uh, once you get balanced up. We're, we've just been a little bit behind. Any more questions on this slide? All right, so the case for parkland dedication, um, the benefit principle, those who benefit from government services should pay for them. Um, bonds, the general obligation bonds, um, you know, requesting existing residents to pay the bills for parks by approving the issuance of deal bonds that will raise their taxes. So, you know, ultimately this is, is back to that principle of putting it on the people that are, are causing the impact. Um, and then level of service, you know, if we decline to, to add new infrastructure or amenities, essentially we're providing a lower level of service on one side of town than we are the rest of the community. And then creative growth, require new development to pay the cost of, of providing the infrastructure and amenities, uh, the need for which has been created by them. Questions? See, that went too bad. About under an hour?
I'm not gonna let you go without a question.
Does anybody have any questions for him?
Yeah, I do. Just a couple, right? With, with all the massive rewrite that we did of the ordinance, was there any public input gathered beforehand, or do we plan a public education piece on what's changing? If this passes?
Yeah, we went, we used our, our parks board, you know, it, everything went through our parks board and passed 6-0, and then everything's been to the subcommittee. As far as going out to the public, you know, a lot of it, a lot of that information's been based on calls we get, you know, hey, can I feed ducks at Grand Park? You know, because they don't know. So we've kind of taken that information and placed it in. And yes, we, we would do a, a public, we got about three weeks here, uh, to do a public, we gotta train our staff first. You know, that's gonna be the biggest thing. And then, and then do a public training, yes, sir.
I, I think it'd be important to do a public education piece of what has changed.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And especially if, if Steve has, you know, people who have been building in our community, and we send letters to them and invite, invite them to show up.
Okay, absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, uh, we have nothing else scheduled for the work session. So at, uh, 5:28, we will go out of the work session and we will go into executive session.